What about what about a surge in badness? Our surplus fine is we can go through it.
Yeah, that's bad.
We can do it.
Okay, boss, we are live.
Okay, thanks, Ron.
We need a little cushion, me think. But neither will we agree with that, none of the kids.
My God. So.
How can I not? Yeah, I know. I'm trying to figure out.
Late this afternoon, I can just sort of forty days ago.
Charlie. But you see them, which we are my ass. Yeah. Further than somebody. There was.
They may as well.
Did you see them?
And all they did, I know they got hurt because.
I'm feeling that we. Somebody, somebody. Sign them lights or something.
Electrolytes. Electrolytes.
I drank a lot of water, babe. And.
That's just hydration. Electrolytes are totally different.
Imagine being grouchy yet.
Well, that's good. Good to know, because I'm saying let's go there. It's a little. So.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
This will be blonde after treatment. I made a letter.
I'm sorry. I'll take.
Kill the creatures. Let the. I can read those. You should have been enjoying me. Okay, we now. This was the video.
Thanks, John.
I'm going to. You don't care about me.
Like that topic.
That's the one. Favorite topic. Okay. It's seven minutes after seven. We're a little late getting started. The council has been an executive session. It started at six fifteen and we adjourned that a short time ago. So at this time, I'll call to order the regular council meeting. City of Prospect, Monday, August twenty first. As I said, it's seven oh seven P. M. The meeting's now in order. First item on the agenda is the approval of minutes of the July seventeenth. Chris and John. Hold on, it's hard for me to concentrate here. The first item on the agenda is the approval of minutes of the July seventeen twenty twenty-three and August three twenty twenty-three city council meetings. Is there a motion to approve?
Change.
Okay.
The city resident, Dr. Henry Sathel's vote.
Correct. Right, we'll make that change. Any other corrections or additions to the minutes?
I'll move as amended.
Okay, as amended, we have a motion to approve the minutes as amended. If we get this, it's seconded as the further discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minister stand approved. Next item on the agenda is comments from citizens. List the folks that are going to speak. There are several different topics that are going to be discussed and several people didn't list a topic, so I want to get a clear idea of what people are going to be talking about. Stephanie Gillivan is here and her comment, Stephanie, you hear. It says you're going to talk about permitting and CCRS.
C.
C C R. Okay. Okay. And then Linda, I know you're here for Alice Gunnison. I know what you're here for, Brian Riddle, Lynn Granger. I know Bob, I know Mark Foster. Harry, oh, okay. And Mark, are you speaking also? Okay. And then. Anita Simon. From Deep Cove Court. Are you going to, are you going to be speaking? You're welcome to, but, but I just need to know. Okay. And then Terry Seelo, I know why you're here and appreciate you being here, Terry. Okay, with that said, I'm going to ask Alice Gunnison to speak first with. Sure.
Okay. I don't hope anybody's going to bring up anything but reference to the zoning. Zoning application. I just want to make sure that everybody understands that council cannot, should not, will not comment in any way whatsoever on anything that's brought before us tonight on zoning.
Okay. Alice, you'll need to step up here. Yeah, well, it's the, let me just say for everybody's benefit, these microphones. Don't affect anything in the council. So unfortunately, you're, you, you need, we need to keep our voices up, all of us. And if you can't hear us, let us know, and I'll remind council members to speak more clearly. These are for the benefit of people who are watching on YouTube. So, or who are participating remotely in the meeting via Webex. There's no one participating remotely, but presumably there are people at home watching. And so this is for their benefit. So Alice.
Yes, I'm with Wolfpen Preservation Association, which is a very small five oh one C three dedicated to preserving, maintaining and enhancing that beautiful corridor that's historic and rustic that's Wolfpen. It's six and a half miles long. End of that. The storage units, I heard about them a couple of weeks ago, and I started sending emails out trying to alert neighborhood groups. And it grew and grew and grew so that many, many people attended the meeting last week, last Monday night. On Wednesday morning, the developer's attorney was told that the proposal would not be approved. There was some kind of technical thing, and it is, as far as I know, off the table. As has been stated, if it gets back on the table with a new proposal, all of that has to go through Metro Louisville Planning and Design Committees before it can ever be brought up in Prospect. We just wanted to make sure that you understood our position, that we're trying to be helpful and be messengers, but that's all.
Okay, Alice, thank you for being here. I appreciate that, appreciate your statement. And so that everyone knows, I've talked with the attorney for the developer and the attorney for the conservation group that Alice is the president of. And I'm told that should anything come to Prospect, that's several months down the road, that there, there are steps that have to be gone through with Metro Planning and Zoning before it would ever reach Prospect to make a determination. And with that said, I don't think anybody else was signed up to speak about storage units. If anyone is signed up to or wants to speak about that, you're welcome to, but just understand it won't be on the agenda this evening for the council's consideration. All right. And then Stephanie, you wanted to talk about permitting.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilman. I wanted to come here tonight to bring something to your all's attention and see if maybe we can have some legislation made in and around this. So currently, in order to build, I'm a developer of the Breakers at Prospect, which many of you all know. And we have regulations and restrictions that guide our neighborhood over and beyond what City of Prospect sets forth. We've had just a couple incidences where builders come and they obtain a permit to build at City of Prospect without getting developer approval. When they don't receive my developer approval, they go ahead and start the house. I then called Rick, who does a phenomenal job for City of Prospect and say, wait, why didn't I get a chance to approve that plan and make sure that it's fitting with the covenants and restrictions set forth of the Breakers? He said, Stephanie, once I issue a building permit, they have every right to build. But in reality, they still have to obtain developer approval. Early on, what we were doing was I would approve plans, then they would obtain their building permit. When Rick would see my signature, knowing that I had approved those building plans, he would then process the permit. It's not happening any longer. I need it to go back to what it was before because I worry my prior development prior to this Sanctuary Bluff, which you all can see this pending lawsuit, we're still dealing with it, where a builder built the house twenty feet too close to the road. And that house is still in litigation and it's been six years. So I'm asking if we can do something to implement that process because as Prospect's going to grow, obviously, we need to have a little bit more. It's not like it's an existing home in an existing neighborhood where they're just trying to, you know, even if it's Sutherland or Hunting Creek or Ennis Brook, they still have to get homeowners association approval. And so that's all I'm asking for is something to change in that so that Rick doesn't feel like his hands are tied and he has to issue a building permit regardless.
Thanks, Stephanie.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here. So Linda Wardell. And I should have mentioned earlier, citizen comments are welcome and we appreciate everyone being here. They're limited to three minutes.
And like last month, I'm going to talk quickly again. Last month, I talked to you about the reasons for the Heritage Creek Park Bridge Project to improve the health of the stream by returning it to its natural state and to create a beautiful gateway to our largest and most used park. I also described the process we use to select the proposed bridge. Tonight, I'd like to focus on a slightly different topic, and that is the importance of investing in our city. Recently, the city has invested in Little Hunting Creek Park, building Charlotte's Playground and the John E. Evans Pavilion. The addition of these amenities has been extremely popular. Daily, you can see families using the playground and picnic tables. Our summer concert season has been very well attended, and the pavilion has been rented out for family reunions, outing events and birthday parties. These facilities promote community engagement and provide intergenerational opportunities. We're a better city when our citizens get to know each other. I believe our community wants us to continue investing in Prospect to make for our current citizens and also to make Prospect more attractive to those looking for a home. Our property values will remain high if we are a city with attractive amenities such as well-appointed parks and natural areas for recreational opportunities. Investing in Prospect also means investing in our city staff and our police force. I believe that the proposed budget amendment that will be presented tonight, which provides a retention pay incentive, would demonstrate our appreciation for our essential city workers who continue to work during COVID. It's vital that we keep, that we do all we can to retain the high-quality workforce we currently have and rely on every day. So in light of these comments, I strongly recommend that city council tonight take positive action on the following ordinances. Approve the second reading of Ordinance six twenty-eight, establishing a capital projects fund, version A. This version allows capital projects to be funded from prior year accumulated surpluses as well as from the current year operating budget. Second, I strongly suggest you approve the second reading of Ordinance six twenty-nine, establishing a capital projects budget for the current fiscal year. Again, version A. This version provides funding for the Heritage Creek Park Bridge Project. And finally, I ask that you approve the first reading of the proposed budget amendment, Ordinance six thirty, which among other things includes retention pay incentives to city employees who worked during COVID and are still on the payroll. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Linda.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Bob Jacob.
I was going to, I'll keep it under three minutes. Ms. Gunnison already talked about one of the issues I was, I was going to talk about, and that was that hundred twelve thousand square foot storage unit and how strongly opposed I am and other members of my community that I spoke to about that. I know that it's not an issue in front of this now, and I know that the city council can't say anything, otherwise you'll look biased and prejudicial towards whenever it comes in front of you. But I can tell you how strongly I feel and the the strength of the opposition at that meeting that was held a little more than a week or a week ago. So moving on to my second thing, I have to take a different opinion concerning that Heritage Creek Bridge. I think that with all the money the city has spent on parks, the fact that we have reduced our city services with trash by greater than fifty percent, and even though we have savings of two hundred thousand dollars from the budget if we had maintained the old system, I don't believe that citizens, and at least of the half a dozen or so families that I polled prior to coming here, are going to support a bridge for a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. If you can get it built for that, when you're, all of the money that you have spent on the new park, which is about three quarters of a million dollars perhaps, and then another hundred and seventy-five thousand plus for this bridge, is a good way to spend city funds. There is enough other things that need to be done in this city to enhance the enjoyment of the entire community, not for the select few, for what is I consider to be just an aesthetic change that park. That is a trailhead. It's, it's a very rustic area. We don't need a Central Park Bridge over that. The, any issues that have to do with silting and things like that can certainly be addressed at a far lesser cost. So I did not find one single person I know, and I know there are people that are supporting it, and I respect that opinion, but I think city council really needs to start taking a poll of the majority of the citizens of this city and see if that's where they want their money spent. So I'm going to say I'm opposed to that, as are at least a half a dozen households that I spoke to. The second issue I was going to address was the proposal for the bonus and retention for the police. And I am very much in favor of that. One of the biggest assets we have is we're the third safest city in the state of Kentucky. That says a lot. It's not because we're all nice people that live out here, it's because we have a great police force. And to invest in the police force for morale and for the rest of the city employees, it's a one-time bonus. And I think that is a useful way to spend some of the city funds. So I strongly, and the people I polled and presented what I was going to present today to them, their feelings parallel that of mine. So they're all in favor of the police force getting, and the city employees, because it shows that their very dedicated effort, you know, gives us the distinction of being such a well-run city and for the quality of our law enforcement.
Hey, thanks, Bob. Appreciate you being here. Lynn Granger.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council. I'm going to add on to some of Linda's comments and agree with her comments. Twelve years ago, about now, we built our first Eagle project in Prospect in support of trail work and trail programs. And since then, we've done forty-one Eagle projects. And back in that day, we would go up in the woods and build things, and it would be pretty quiet. It would be just us. Now, more recently, we go to do projects up there and people all over the place. We've got paddlers, bird watchers, we've got joggers, hikers, parents, grandparents. One of the interesting things, we finish a project today, and I will promise you, it gets used in one or two minutes because people will be running through it, using it as the kids are taking the tools and all back to, back to their cars and vehicles. So I want to thank all of you for your support over the years and all of these projects. As far as the park system goes, I used to look at this and all these little various parts we put together. And now what I see, I was amazed, and Mayor, you and I have talked about this before, that when the playground went in, it was used instantly, the pavilions, all of this. And so what's happening, you've got folks now going out, using these things several times a week. My granddaughter's come over, they want to, we got to take them over here now and all that. These things that are part of our city have now become part of the lives of the people who live here. And it enhances us, and I think it puts us in a league right now that no one else matches. And so the more that we do along the lines to reinvest and continue the process of doing things that keep our people active and make, give Prospect the special fields for, I'm all for it. I do support the pay incentive program that's, that's been discussed already. Without question, that should be done. I also support the new capital plan you're looking at as far as budgeting for capital plans. And then I'm very much in favor of building that Heritage Creek Bridge. We can get that thing done. Patrick Mahomes is a great quarterback for Kansas City, if you're not a football fan, and he's phenomenal. And I saw a clip the other day of him playing, it was a game, and last few minutes of the game, the other team comes up ahead and he's now behind. And it's like two minutes to go. He jumps on the field, all that vigor, runs down there and scores, and they win the game. And as he comes off the field, he's jumping up and down saying, this is what we do. This is what we do. He had probably a little colorful language on that, but the essence was, this is what we do. When it comes to enhancing the lives of Prospect, our elected leaders, our professional leaders, our volunteer leaders, this is what we do. I thank you for your efforts today, and hopefully we make these things continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Appreciate that. Brian, Brian Riddle. Brian, thank you for being here.
Thanks for having me, Mr. Mayor. Council members. Short and sweet, I just basically wanted to come in and make a couple of comments about our city employees, particular our police department. I'm the recent transplant, been here about three years now. Was an executive chef, so I've lived all over the country, and I can without a doubt say that every person in this city that I have had the opportunity to interact with or need something or information from has gone above and beyond. The police officers have come out of the house, had some problems with some speeding out in front of the house, and it was within an hour, they had a plan in place, they had a speed machine out there, the patrols were stepped up. I mean, these guys have gone above and beyond. Not only are they very professional, but they're very personal or personable, excuse me, and just go above and beyond. You can tell that they really care about this community and making it better for all of us. Like I said, having been the outsider, kind of looking at it from a fresh perspective, it's very enlightening to come to a community like this and actually feel like you're a part of it. Spoke with a gentleman, I can't remember his name unfortunately, from the code, building codes. I didn't get the answer I wanted, but boy, I sure felt good about hanging up after that. So I just wanted to basically throw my support in there. I think the retention pay is a good thing. You know, with everything that they went through and the world, the way the climate and the world is changing at this point, some of the adversities they've been up against, it's the least I think we can do to show support and to really retain some fantastic employees and officers.
Thank you. Thanks again, Brian. Appreciate you being here. Terry Seelo.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm not only a resident of Prospect, I'm a home builder and love what I do. I love being in Prospect. The comments of our city employees and our police department, fabulous people. I personally have had their services as you have. We have a safe community. It's well-known as a safe community. And thank you to the council and the mayor for your support of our officials that protect us and take care of us in our community, along with the other city employees. We appreciate that. I'm here to affirm the betterment of taking care of our city employees and our police department and every way we can. Let's, let's be competitive with other departments around here and retain and keep quality people while it's working, it does work, let's do that. And last, I didn't ask to speak to this, if I may.
Certainly.
Stephanie, I agree with your comments. Folks, get behind your developers and your builders in this community and keep our codes working for our community betterment as well. So thank you for letting me share.
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you.
That's everybody that I had on the list. Is there, did I miss someone? Yes, certainly.
I'm Catherine Sauer, and I'd like to talk about the Heritage Creek Bridge Project. As a little background, my family's been a huge supporter of the parks and a regular visitor to the parks, Heritage Creek in particular. We walk the trails on average at least once a week and in all kinds of weather. My daughter had her picture, her wedding announcement pictures taken in the snow. And so it means a lot to us. Our children now bring their children to the park, and we've all volunteered on multiple occasions to help clear the trails or remove invasive plants and also volunteered to help with the annual trail run in Heritage Creek, which brings people from all over. I'm an artist and I, almost all my paintings, of which are landscapes, are from photos I've taken in Prospect Parks. I love the changing landscape and a little bit of a tree fanatic, and so I, I notice changes in my favorite trees. And it's really my sanctuary. And judging by the number of people that I meet walking through the park, it's many peoples as well. The park is so well-maintained by our fabulous public works folks, and they are quick to fix the trails whenever there needs attention from fallen trees or from pine weeds. When the fort park first opened, the trailhead on Montero was just a dirt path, and it was kind of dangerous because it was, you know, kind of had quite a drop off. So when the large rock stairs and railing were installed, the aesthetics increased tremendously. Visitors had a beautiful entrance to the park. It really made a statement. I would love to see the Orange Trail have a statement as well at the trailhead. The Orange Trail, from my observation, appears to be the trail most people use, especially first timers, to enter the park. And the industrial-looking culvert pipe, it's just not worthy of our beautiful park. In addition, as a kayaker, I've noticed that the change in the last three of the years is the water levels at the launch is kind of low, and I'm assuming that's from the sediment. And so I'm hoping that by removing that pipe, that would help that situation. So I'm asking that the bridge project be added to a capital budget, and I'm also very much in favor of the employees of Prospect receiving a pay increase because they are doing a fabulous job.
Thank you. Is there, is there anyone else? Okay, thanks, everyone, for being here, and you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting or as much of the meeting as you'd like to. Next item on the agenda is the mayor's report. I'm going to talk mainly about the capital projects budget and the proposed amended operating budget. Prospect remains on a solid financial footing. We finished the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three with an approximately eighty thousand dollar surplus. And as of today, our current cash on hand is approximately three point four million dollars. Had a good discussion with John Carter today about why we have different numbers, but, but I looked at our bank account today, I looked at our C D. bank account today, I looked at our CDs today, I looked at the accrued interest on our CD and the funds we have invested, invested to the League of Cities, and it actually slightly exceeds $3.4 million. 1.8 million of that is reserved by ordinance for the projected shortfall in the Kentucky State pension. We're, we may be the only city that reserves for that contingency, but, but we do have that in place. Uh, that leaves 1.6 million that I refer to as accumulated surplus. It's surplus that we've built up over the years, just like we did this year. We added another $80,000 to that surplus. Uh, the city holds a $1 million CD through Republic Bank. The city has also invested $1,950,000 in two funds to the Kentucky League of Cities. Thus, the city's invested funds total $2,950,000. The council and I have benefited, have had the benefit of receiving excellent advice from the city's investments committee. And the city has made sound investments that are producing a good return. The proposed capital projects budget offers a different type of investment. A substantial investment in a stream crossing bridge in Harrods Creek Park. The proposed amended operating budget includes yet another type of investment. This one in our police officers and other city employees. Our citizens do not pay their taxes with the expectation that we will amass an impressive portfolio. Rather, they expect us to invest in their city to help ensure that they remain safe. Our citizens remain safe and to invest in our parks and other infrastructure. In my view, both the proposed capital projects budget and the proposed amended operating budget provide a good and prudent balance between these different types of investments. The change we have implemented in the city's recycling service will produce a savings to the city in this fiscal year of $171,000. There, there's actually a savings from the change in the trash pickup and the recycling, uh, that will benefit the city to, to the tune of about $450,000 a year. That's money that we're saving by, by having changed the service. So we're paying the same amount of money for less service, but we're not, instead of paying $1.2 million every year, we're going to be paying about $740,000 each year for the next this year and the coming three years beyond this year. So the amended operating budget includes several changes. I, I won't, uh, I won't belabor those. The council has seen those proposals. It'll be presented for first reading this evening. But I will say, the current budget that we're operating under projected a deficit of $40,000. There, uh, there actually was a budget, a deficit uh, substantially more than, I may have the numbers a little garbled, but the, but the, the deficit exceeded $50,000 in the current operating budget. Instead, we're, we're looking at an amended operating budget that will produce a projected surplus of $70,000. So we've gone from a deficit under the existing operating budget under the proposed budget will have a surplus. And uh, the, the amended operating budget, this has been alluded to by several of our speakers. Provides for retention pay incentive to city employees who are employ- who were employed by the city during COVID and who are still employed by the city at this time. For individuals who were employed by the city during COVID, COVID and who are still employed by the city, we would pay $2,500 retention pay incentive to full-time employees and $1,250 to part-time employees. In next year's budget, I anticipate asking the council to approve funds to make similar payments to those same employees who are still employed with the city at that time. The total in the amended operating budget for uh, the retention incentive pay uh, is $35,000. That's a total expense that's contemplated in this budget. I had originally planned to ask for funds to pay premium pay as, as authorized by Congress during the COVID emergency. However, the ability of cities to make those types of payments ended in April 2023. My interest in considering premium pay came about when a member of the council asked us to obtain salary information from peer cities when we were considering salary increases in the current operating budget. And we increased the bud- the, the salaries for our employees by 3% in the current operating budget. When we made inquiry of what we consider to be peer cities. Uh, it became apparent one city was paying less than 3%, I think they were paying 2%. Two other cities were paying more than we were proposing to pay, more than 3%. But each of the four cities had paid premium pay uh, under the ARPA funds, the COVID funds from Congress. And Prospect did not, had not done that. So that motivated me from, from the point of view of equity to consider making these premium pay now retention incentive payments to our, uh, to our employees. So the cities that we learned about, uh, who paid who paid premium pay, we've learned of one city that did not, but Douglas Hills, Middletown, Jefferson Town, St. Matthews, Newcastle and West Butchell each played, paid $5,000 to each of their city employees. Shively paid $6,000 to each of its employees. Linden is the city that we learned did not make any premium pay payments. Meadowview paid $5,000 to its police officers and $3,000 to its clerk, treasurer and office assistant. Three cities paid an increased amount in hourly wage for their employees, and those were Lebanon Junction, Eminence and Shepherdsville. Louisville paid $5,000 to first responders and others who dealt directly with the public and paid between $1,500 and $5,000 to all of its other employees. The amended operating budget also includes an increase in our liability insurance. Our current limit for coverage for claims against the city is $2 million. I'm proposing that we increase that $10 million in coverage and the incremental cost would take our premium from $38,500 to uh $45,000, so an increase of about $7,000 in the premium. I've also proposed adding $25,000 to our legal expense budget to be able to continue the disagreement we have with LDG and with the Metro Council, which approved the zoning change for the LDG project. I've also proposed adding $5,000 to the community, community developed projects uh, to give us flexibility to add additional community projects. The concerts have been extraordinarily well received. The uh, performance of Hamlet, uh, Shakespeare in the Park was, was very well received. And so we want to have the option of being able to, to fund other community develop, development activities. There's some other cleanup items in the proposed amended budget, but that's uh, that's the gist of it. So we continue to handle the city's finances in a thoughtful and frugal manner. The proposed capital budget receives a second reading this evening. There are two ordinances, 628 and 629. The first is an, an enabling ordinance. It creates the idea of a capital projects fund. The second ordinance that's been approved for, in a first reading allocates uh, money for the stream crossing bridge that we've been talking about. So we will be, uh, the council will be considering those this evening and providing a second reading and hopefully approval of that. Then the, then we've, I've just talked about the, uh, the proposed amended operating budget and that it provides for a surplus rather than the deficit we're currently operating under. So with those remarks, uh, that concludes the, uh, the mayor's comments. And I will move back to the agenda and ask for Mr. Carter to provide a financial report.
Uh, briefly, I'm summarizing what was distributed in the packet. Uh, this is essentially a summary of the compiled financial report. Uh, our first month in the fiscal year, July, we ended the month with about just over $3 million cash on hand. Uh, we had revenue of about $94,000 and expenditures of $331,000. Our restricted road fund balance uh, is currently $156,000 and change. Uh, the investments for July earned us roughly almost $60,000 since we made our initial investment in February. Uh, revenues will start to pick up this month. Tax bills that everybody's waiting for, I'm sure, uh, come out this week. So receipts, and we've already actually received the first payment. And with that, I will entertain any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Carter?
Yeah. John, the, the mayor says 3.4 million. And our CPA report says 3 million. What's the $400,000 difference?
The date is the difference.
Well, this is July.
Right, and the mayor took those numbers, I believe, from today.
So we, so, so within three weeks, we picked up $400,000? How'd we do that?
Uh, I'll have to.
That's a neat trick.
There's no trick, I'll speak to it. So what I did today was I looked online at our Republic Bank checking accounts, there are two accounts.
But that's reflected here.
May I finish? Yeah. So I, I looked at our, online at our Republic checking account and it said that our, it told me the numbers. I then looked at the, um, I know we have $1,950,000 invested through the Kentucky League of Cities. I know that we have accrued interest on a third CD that's still at Republic Bank, that's about $20,000. So I added all those numbers together and it came up to more than $3.4 million. I don't know why the report says what it says. I'm confused by that, but I know I looked at those numbers today. I know how to add, that's the number I came up with. Okay. Okay, other questions for John? Okay, uh, we'll turn to the Forestation Board report, please.
The Forestation Board had its regular meeting on August 8th. A lot of the meeting was devoted to a report by our consulting, uh, Arborist Andrew Hannan on the need for tree trimming, removals and maintenance at city-owned sites. In particular, along Bridgepoint Boulevard, there's 15 trees that need attention. And certain older trees on the exit side are overshadowing some recently planted trees and they need cutback also. There's other areas, uh, Timber Ridge Drive where we planted some beautiful fir trees some years ago, need some maintenance. The exit side of Hunting Creek Drive and some memorial trees, uh, which are in Harrods Creek Park, Butney Parks just need, uh, work and should be included under regular city maintenance contractual needs. Another item that we covered, uh, at our meeting was the selection trees for the annual Arbor Fest, which is now scheduled for Saturday, October 21. Uh, we're going to have pawpaws, eastern red buds, Jane McNolias, uh, Coussa Dogwoods and uh Sun Valley Red Maples, total of 50 trees in each of these classes that I just named. We had a meeting with Hunting Creek Country Club, uh, who, uh, which is interested in our canopy tree program. Uh, normally we're offering canopy trees, which are larger trees than the ones we distributed at Arbor Fest, nicer trees uh, to city residents, uh, where basically the city pays uh, cost of the tree and the city pays for the planning, roughly about $150, total about $300. The club asked if they could get a free canopy tree and plant it with their own ground staff. And the board voted to support that, which had another, another tree planted in Prospect. A final item was a report by Connie Kuhn, who's on the board, who has been surveying the people who got canopy trees. About a dozen people and about a dozen trees in two offerings and she got responses from about 50% of the people, very positive, and we plan to offer this program again. The next meeting, uh, scheduled for September 12th. And will be ongoing, we're working on a, a list of privately owned trees that present dangerous conditions that will need to be removed. We'll put that together, uh, and discuss that at the September 12th meeting. Any questions?
Any questions for Lee? Lee, thanks so much, we appreciate it. Please thank the Forestation Board. Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, Linda.
Our committee met a week ago today. And the items that I have to report are, in Little Hunting Creek Park, the Fox Family Chainsaw statue is extremely popular. Almost every time I drive by, I see people walking up to, to take a look. And, and a lot of kids having their picture taken in front of it. So Ron has installed a post and chain barrier around the statue to remind people to enjoy the art from a distance, and that seems to be working very well. Um, in terms of Parks and Recreation Programs, the most wanted band performance that took place in the pavilion on August 6th was a very popular event. I counted at least 80 people in attendance. And as someone from my, my committee pointed out, uh, people sort of come and go throughout the evening. So the total number of people that at least heard part of the concert is, is maybe approaching 100. The final performance of the concert series will take place on September 10th at 6:30 PM. This is a concert by Cheryl, the Cheryl Rouse Band, and it will feature soul, blues and R and B music. And I've been told that she is a very energetic performer, so we're looking forward to that. Um, I'm happy to announce that September 15th will be Prospect Day at Racing Louisville FC Club in, in the Lynn Family Stadium. And we started out with 30 tickets and I believe last Monday or Tuesday announced the ev- availability to the city. And I'm told that as of today, there's one ticket left. So we've already been in contact with the Racing Louisville people. And we have the ability to get additional tickets. We're going to have to figure out how to, how to determine how many more we need. Um, the way this works is that, um, I think we're paying a little bit for the, for the tickets and selling them at $8, so the city's putting in a little bit of money for that, but the popularity is certainly overwhelmed to me. And one of the things that, uh, committee member Sally Snyder was able to, uh, work out is that there will be a meet and greet with the players after the game so that they can sign autographs and so forth. That's limited to 25 children, I think is, is what it's limited to. So we're asking people when they buy the tickets, if they want to participate in that, because we do have to have a limit. The next item on the list is the Pollinator Garden. Um, this was actually an idea that Ron Cundev came up with. We've got this big meadow in Harrods Creek Park near the canoe launch. And, you know, we thought, boy, we should plant some native flowers in that area, create a pollinator garden. So we will be using volunteers this fall, uh, to plant the plants. They will be little plugs. It'll be located between the parking lot and the canoe launch and Ron and I had marked out the location last week. Um, and the garden will provide food sources for native bees and butterflies. So I think that's going to be very popular. It should be beautiful. And if, you know, depending on the valuation of it, we can always add to it. We've got a lot of meadow up there. Um, the application period is open for a high school student interested in serving as a youth member of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. The de- the deadline for applications is actually this Friday. And I know that our committee member Tina Bevan, who's heading up this project, has had at least one application received, and she's talked to several other students. So I think we'll have several applications and I'm sure we'll have a wonderful representative that will give us a student's perspective. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Linda, any questions for Linda? Thanks, Linda. You did a great job. We're, we're appreciative. Um, Chief Sherard, police report, please.
First of all, on behalf of the police department and all the employees here at City Hall, I would like to express my gratitude for those of you who sat up and spoke on behalf of the employees here. It's greatly appreciated. Uh, I get on to the, uh, report. Uh, house checks again have started to increase even after we've had that. I'll get on to the report. House checks, again, have started to increase, even after we've had that decrease for several months. Everybody's starting to believe again. We had an increase of three hundred over the same period last, last year. The citations and written warnings continue to stay at an increased level with the traffic enforcement, as had been requested. There was a more than double for the same period last year. So that's a good thing. With regards to reports, actually, in terms of like new cases, good to report that there were no new felony reports to, to report, but there were supplements to prior cases that, that I'll talk briefly about. We had a case from back in February where a resident had some checks that were stolen, and Sergeant McKeon followed up on those, developed a suspect, worked with the banking institution, obtained photographs, identified the, the individual involved, and it's somebody that I would call him the frequent flyer. He does it to a lot of people. But anyway, our case has been worked in with others. The guy was picked up in Bullitt County, and so he actually has been charged on our case and multiple other cases. But again, it's through his determination that our case didn't fall through the cracks, that he worked it, and we'll come up with some sort of a resolution on that, and again, that's due to him. Another case, we talked about it here, where we had a resident in the apartment where they had a gun discharged. We talked about that a few months ago. It was an accidental discharge, a guy handling a gun, and he drops it. A round goes off. It was, it was a Saturday night special. It was an inferior weapon. Let's talk about that first. Anyway, the thing drops, a bullet discharges, and it goes into the floor and into apartment beneath. Fortunately, nobody was there, nobody was injured, but he followed up on that case, worked closely with the county attorney's office, and determined what type of charges and would they prosecute somebody. They finally came to somewhat of a resolution on that, and they made what's referred to as a citation arrest. Well, basically, you cite someone to court on that, so that individual will be held criminally responsible for that particular act. So he followed up on that, worked with the homeowner downstairs to do that, and also actually worked with the guy that owned the gun, who was cooperating. Another case that I'll just talk about briefly, to just talk about, again, to tout Sergeant McKeon again, I mean, I'm so glad that, you know, a month and a half ago that we promoted this guy because of the diligence that he operates on everything. On July eleventh, we had a guy that came in that was very upset. He had taken his car for service, and when they were servicing it, it was a BMW. They found a device under the hood that had apparently been there for some time. It was an electronic tracker that you could track. He thought somebody had bugged his car and was following him. So we took this, not me, McKeon did. He took this, he researched it, and he actually was able to determine that this is a device that BMW installed in some vehicles when they, where they were produced, and that's the way that they check on these vehicles where they're transported throughout the world. They put it off. BMW actually put it on. And he was able to determine that, worked with the owner, and then I ran into the owner last Friday at Crowers, and he came up to me and says, tell your guy BMW got back with me, and they confirmed they put it in, but when the battery went dead, they lost track of it. But that was amazing. But, I mean, it was through his due diligence that he just didn't blow it off. But, so he gave that man a piece of money, because he was pretty upset when he first came in, as he should be. Let's see, just to touch on another thing, I mentioned it last month, we're closer to doing it. All of our staff will receive training in the Narcan, because we have encountered you know, for the, for years, we didn't encounter hardly any of it, and it's all over Louisville Metro, but we were pretty immune to it. We had, we have had a few cases here lately, but the fire department's always close their rate to administer Narcan. But I was contacted about a month or so ago about a state program where they provide it to police departments and stuff for free. They actually provide the Narcan for free. It used to be twenty seven dollars a dose, and then they would even charge the police departments to do it. And then nowadays, it takes two and three, and sometimes four doses, to actually take somebody out of an overdose. But it's now free, thanks to Kentucky Office of Drug Control Policy. I was contacted. Says, we will give you the Narcan, and we will give you the training. Our entire department will be trained in the first two weeks of March, and I have already received the shipment, and we've got three dozen doses of Narcan upstairs locked away until then. But that's all I have for now. The last thing that he has.
What's the show's like?
I don't know. Thanks, Frank. Thank you, chief. Any other questions for chief? I'll, I'll let you know. I'll text you. Because I'll go up there and I'll find out. Now you got me curious. It just came last week. It's gotta be fresh. The box we see.
I'll read through the.
Yeah, exactly.
Thanks, chief. We appreciate it. Appreciate all of you and your opportunity. All right, we will turn to unfinished business, and the first item of unfinished business is a second reading of Ordinance six twenty eight. This is an ordinance establishing a capital investment fund at the city of Prospect, and it's what I alluded to earlier as an enabling ordinance. Is there a motion to give Ordinance six twenty eight a second reading and approval?
I'll move second reading approval.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Clark for second reading and approval. Is there a second to this motion?
Second.
Okay, is there discussion?
Mayor, I worked with Don and Frank on what has been described as Draft B and brought the changes to you, the mayor. And we had discussions out of it, and my concern was that the draft that you had provided to us initially didn't have the minimum contribution, the annual minimum contribution of three percent. And in discussing it with you, you indicated that you could support the three percent, but you wanted to include the accumulated surplus as a mechanism for contribution rather than just from the city revenue. In thinking about that, our Draft B has just coming out of the annual projected revenue. Well, the issue about that, as I became more thoughtful about it, was that the proposal that, that we had in Draft B would only put money into capital projects account in twenty twenty four, because it had to be out of revenue of of city revenues coming in. We've already passed the budget. So either that, or we would have to have an amended budget to do it, and it just seemed to be more complicated, and I thought that it's best that we not tie the, the council's hands in trying to make this capital project fund successful, and that's why I support Draft A and move that we amend for second reading, Ordinance six twenty eight, with the Draft A changes.
Okay, is there a second to the motion to amend?
I don't have Draft A here. I'll sec.
Mr. Holmes moved, and it's been seconded to amend Ordinance six twenty eight. This before us for second reading with Draft A, just in the council packet. Is there, is there discussion on the motion to amend? If not, are we ready, are we ready for a vote on the motion to amend?
So the only change between versions that Don and Frank and I drafted is to include accumulated surplus.
Okay.
That's the only change. That's the only change that, that was made.
Okay.
And like I expressed, in talking with the mayor about it, if, if we're serious about having a capital projects fund, we ought to have it funded as soon as possible, rather than waiting the whole year to go without doing it, or creating the situation where we have to have an amended budget and two more council meetings before we could have funds in it. This allows us to do the surplus in Ordinance six twenty nine to approve funding for it at this point in time. And I just thought, rather than tying council's hands, do it, give them a maximum flexibility on it. It stands on its own, but it allows us to do six twenty nine if we choose to do that.
Is there further discussion on the motion to amend Ordinance six twenty eight with Draft A that's been provided to council in, in the packet? Not, are we ready for a vote on the motion to amend? Okay, Sarah Evans?
Yeah, approved. Yes.
Okay, and Don Gibson?
No.
Mayor Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Mr. Clark? Yes.
Mr. Foulcher?
Yeah. Yes.
Yes, okay, so that's, then Draft A is approved by vote of five to one. Are there any further motions?
Move acceptance of, move second reading of the amendment.
Okay, that's, that motion's already before us. It's now the, the motion for second reading of Ordinance six twenty eight as amended. Is there further discussion on the motion on Ordinance six twenty eight as amended? If not, if we're ready for a vote on six twenty eight as amended, we'll call a roll. Mr. Foulcher?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so that's carries six zero, Ordinance six twenty eight, the enabling ordinance is approved. The next item on the agenda, and I want, I want to say, I want to, I want to thank Mr. Gibson and Mr. Foulcher and David Holmes for working on this and working with me on it. We agreed on, on just about everything, and the things we didn't agree on was fine, and that they've come to the council for consideration, and that, and we'll consider that further when we look at six twenty nine, but I do appreciate the effort and time that was devoted to that. So the next item on the agenda is consideration for second reading of Ordinance six twenty nine. Is there a motion to give Ordinance six twenty nine a second reading and approval?
I'll move second reading, six twenty nine.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, is there discussion on the motion to give a second reading and approval of Ordinance six twenty nine?
I am, I'd like to amend it to, to Draft B.
So this was just in the, in the council packet, there were two drafts, Draft A and Draft B. There's a motion to amend to to approve Draft B. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion on the motion to amend using Draft B?
Yeah, I am, I put together Draft B with the intent of simplifying it considerably. The, you'll note that most of the whereas's were struck. Actually, they're generally meaningless. The intent here is for a long-term capital program to be established and funded, and I don't think that that intent was meant by Draft A when we take, take money, current money and spend it right away. The intent is looking longer term to get a, call it sinking fund, you'd call it, you know, capital projects fund, but we need to be serious about some of the longer term items that we're going to be faced with as, as we go along, and it's the, you know, buying property, facing with potential for annexation, annexation, annexation expenses, equipment, who knows what all, but I think that the current spending, put money over here and then taking it out right away, which is what A does, at least in my mind, I don't think is consistent with what we're trying to accomplish with the long-term capital fund. So there you have it. This B calls for a, an initial, an initial fund injection of two hundred thousand. I mean, that's, that's an arguable amount, but I think we need to put money in it to show we're serious, we're serious about it, putting money in, taking it out for something immediate. I don't think, as I said, I don't think it meets the long-term goals. I think we're, we should be putting forward.
Is there further discussion on the motion to amend to adopt Draft B?
I, I agree with everything that Frank has said, with the exception of the problem in my mind is it doesn't allow us to vote on the bridge. And, I mean, it does, but it would require us to have two other council meetings to do it. You're talking about putting this two hundred thousand dollars in, and then if we chose to by council action, approve the bridge project, then we could take funds out of it. That puts us two months down the road, and from my perspective, we need to decide whether we're going to do the bridge or not do the bridge now, because we have a, a contract proposal before us. We all know if we wait on that, it's only going to get more expensive. If we do it now, we have a chance of keeping it within the budgetary limits we have, and I'm supportive of the bridge. So I'll be voting no on B, although I agree with the concept of.
Well, I think that, that B, I think.
Frank, is there, let me come back to you. Any other discussion on the, on Draft B, the motion to amend to adopt Draft B?
Frank, if, so David's right in assuming you would take two more meetings to fund the bridge under your amendment. That I don't know, but I see them as two distinct issues. One is a capital fund, the other is a bridge. We voted the bridge, but we voted on, but, but to tie them together like this, I think is not something we should be doing. Like John Evans, a couple of meetings ago, said, well, what, what's the difference between having a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars in or an operating budget and spending it right now on a bridge, assuming that that passes? And, and, you know, not doing much of anything with a capital fund. So, you know, my whole focus on the capital funds has been it's a long-term project, it needs to be funded. The specific bridge issue just comes at a inopportune time, and we'll vote on the, the bridge, but I think it should be a separate issue. It should not be tied into the, the capital fund.
So taking into account David's concern about the time lapse, you know, I agree with you, Frank, pertaining to, you know, the original thought of standing this up, but also being sensitive timeline, and then also, you know, obviously increased costs, re-proposal. I don't know if we have an expiration date on the proposal, or it's going to go up based on whatever. So can, can, will it take two more months?
Sure.
All that plus.
Absolutely.
First and second reading.
Yeah, first and second reading. And the other thing, in terms of thinking about the capital fund, project fund, and it being for long-term projects, Linda expressed to us, which I did not know historically, the bridge that we have there was a temporary. It's been temporary for nine years. So really, this is a long-term capital project that we're working on. The funding mechanism is a different matter, and I, I hope that we will be able to get Draft A and. The funding mechanism is a different matter and I I hope that we will be able to get draft A and the funds up and continue with doing the capital funding that we need to do for long term projects in the future. But I envision the bridges being a long term project that's time is due.
Is there further discussion on the motion to amend six twenty nine by adopting draft B? I'll I'll speak to it briefly. I I would encourage the council to vote against the motion to amend to adopt draft B. I think it's, uh, it's designed to stop the bridge from going forward, certainly at the minimum delays it two months. So I would encourage the council to vote against it. Those are, that's my point of view and my comment. Uh, but is if 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 there's further discussion?
Doug, I don't know that that it stops the bridge. You you've got seventy thousand dollar surplus. The you look at the timeline, uh, you could fund part of that bridge this year, but the seventy thousand dollar surplus shouldn't bound seven years. I don't know that this stops it.
Well, we got.
It would just be, you would be, rather than spending from the general fund, you would be taking from this budget. And as you said earlier, there's a seventy thousand dollar surplus. The the bridge is is what a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars?
So that's two months, two more months, because we have to amend the operating budget that we just approved to allocate the money. Plus, we've got a bid for.
Well, that goes to.
Let me finish my point. We've got a, we've got a bid in hand that we need to decide are we going to accept it or not accept it. And and I would suggest that the time to do that is now, not two months from now, but go ahead.
You you don't know that, that that you don't know how long that bid is good. And I suspect if it's a two month concern, the the contractor would be wanting to go all the way. You get a contractor, it's the same contract that Little Creek Park. So you could fund it out of this year's, this year's budget and and uh, and get most of it done. Because from a cash flow perspective, you won't spend all hundred and seventy thousand dollars issue any real thing.
Okay, is there further discussion? If not, are we ready to vote on the motion to amend and to adopt draft B? Sarah Hans?
So let me make sure.
Yeah, which one is draft?
Yeah, which is like, let me make sure what I'm voting on.
Sure. So draft B is Frank's version that eliminates the bridge and puts in two hundred thousand dollars without reference to what that two hundred thousand dollars is for.
In which direction, Doug? Doug, it doesn't eliminate. It doesn't eliminate the bridge.
Well, look.
It it stands on its own for the the capital fund. That's what it does.
Frank, the ordinance that we had a first reading on allocated the Harris Creek Park Stream Crossing Brook Project, one hundred eighty thousand dollars. Your amendment draws a line through the Harris Creek Park Stream Crossing Project and draws a line through a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. To me, that removes that project from this budget.
From the capital, from the capital, but there's other ways to pay for it, which is.
I understand. We've had that discussion. So are we ready to vote or we can have further discussion?
Sarah, I'm already voting.
Okay, Sarah, Sarah, Sarah sort of know, but if we're going to discuss, let's let's discuss, then we'll then we'll vote. Okay, so Sarah, your vote, your vote is no?
Yes.
Okay, and Don Gibson?
Yes.
Okay, and Mayor Evans? Okay, David Holmes? And John Clark?
No.
Okay, and Frank?
Yes.
So that motion is defeated four to two. We'll return to the main motion, which is the motion to give second reading and approval of ordinance six twenty nine.
Move to amend um, for second reading with draft A, mend the changes to reflect of draft A.
Okay, so there's a motion to amend, uh, the first reading of six twenty nine to adopt draft A. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Is there discussion on the motion to amend adopting draft A? If not, are we ready for vote? Sarah Hans?
Yes.
Don Gibson? And yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Frank? So if your vote was, your vote was no?
No.
Okay, so the vote is, uh, the draft A is approved. The motion is now amended to include draft A. Is there, we're back now to the main motion, motion give a second reading and approval of ordinance six twenty nine. Is there further discussion on ordinance six twenty nine as amended?
I'd just like to say, we have to have a first year. So this is it. From going forward, I think we can deliberate the way Frank wants to do it. And David, you concur with that.
That's great. Absolutely.
There had to be a first step. This is on the table, on our radars. I think we got to go.
And it's really known for.
Our budgetary process this year has been effective, but it's been messy. But and I think with us being new, it's been messy. But but I think it's been good, but that's democracy.
And the best has been a lot messier.
But it's really noted that everybody's thoughts are.
Well, it's a good, it's a good debate, a good discussion. And again, I'm appreciative for the work that Don Gibson and Frank Fulcher and David Holmes did and working on these different ideas. I think it really got us ready to tee this up tonight to to act. So is there further discussion on, uh, order six twenty nine as amended with draft A? If not, are we ready to vote? Sarah Hans?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Gibson?
No.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes. No.
So then, uh, ordinance six twenty nine is approved, but gets a second reading and is approved. It was voted to in favor of the ordinance. And because because the, uh, in both cases, the the motion was to, uh, for second reading and to amend these. I'll give them each a second reading. Six twenty eight was an ordinance establishing capital projects fund, what I refer to as the enabling budget. Uh, six twenty nine is an ordinance establishing a budget for the capital project fund of the city of Prospect for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty three and ending June thirty, twenty twenty four, and it provides funding for the stream crossing bridge. Okay, the next item on the agenda is, um,
Doug, does someone have to read those?
I I think this, I think that the reading, the, oh, you mean as opposed to me reading it?
Yeah. I don't know. We've done that. I I'm just asked, I'm asking the question.
I think it's, I think it's a fair question. I don't know the answer, but if a member of the council would do what I just did, that'll.
Second reading of ordinance number six twenty eight, series twenty twenty three, and ordinance establishing a capital fund, investment fund for the city of Prospect. And ordinance six twenty nine, series twenty twenty three, and ordinance establishing a budget for the capital investment fund of the city of Prospect for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty three and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty.
And actually, in both cases, that they were amended to be capital, uh, project fund rather than capital investment fund.
Thank you.
So with that, uh, so Frank, does that, I think that gets us where we need to be?
I'm just looking at tradition.
I think I think that's a good place to look. So I'm looking at my agenda and, uh, well, you know what we didn't do? We didn't, um, we didn't have an authorization for the.
We don't, we don't have to do, we can't do that. And this is an open.
I've got a bad agenda.
So we've got to have it. It's right there.
Oh, okay.
It is new business.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is authorization for the city of Prospect to file an appeal of the opinion and order dismissing. Enter on August three, twenty twenty three, and case number twenty three, CI zero 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 three one one, City of Prospect, Prospect Kentucky versus Louisville Metro Government EDL. This is the, um, appeal from Metro Council to the Circuit Court. Circuit Court dismissed our appeal. This would be an appeal from the Circuit Court ruling to the Kentucky Court of Appeals. Is there a motion to authorize the city to move forward?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Well, I'll ask for a roll call vote. Mr. Fulcher?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Yes, Mr.
Yes.
Yes.
That's carries six zero. Thank you. Sorry, I've been reading the agenda, so I apologize for that. Uh, next item on the agenda is a first reading of ordinance six thirty and ordinance amending the budget for the general fund of the city of Pride Prospect for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty three and ending June thirty, twenty twenty four. Is there a motion to amend? Mayor Evans moved the, uh, adoption of ordinance six thirty. Is there a second?
I'm moving the first reading.
Correct. I'm sorry. First reading, motion for first reading. Is there a second to give the ordinance? Okay, is there discussion? If not, are we ready to vote on the question of whether we give the ordinance six thirty a first reading? Frank, your vote? You ready to vote?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
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 Okay, so first reading is approved by a vote of six zero. Uh, Mayor Evans, would you give the ordinance first reading?
Yes, same view. City of Prospect, Kentucky, ordinance number six thirty, series twenty twenty three, an ordinance amending the budget for the general fund of the city of Prospect for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty three and ending June thirty, twenty twenty four.
Thank you. That will be on the agenda the next meeting for second reading. And possible approval. Uh, the next item on the agenda, it's first reading for that six thirty one and ordinance relating to the regulation of solar installations and creating a new chapter in your prospect code of ordinance for that purpose. Is there a motion to give a first reading to this solar installation ordinance?
I'll move first reading.
Is there a second? Second? Is there discussion?
We need this.
I think I think we really do. I've I've mentioned to some folks driving down River Road. If you approach forty two, forty eight, the suburbs on the left, if it happens, not in the city, it's going to have solar panels on virtually every service. So I think we want to, uh, we want to try to avoid that. And and there's promotion of sales of solar panels in Prospect, so that's.
I have several comments.
Sure.
If I can find them. Question, uh, number one is why do we, why are we limiting this to residences and not to the commercial district?
Great question. I don't know the answer.
Okay, it's nothing in there that, um, that does it. And then there's another this section here that I, um, F, bring my engineering hat on. I I just don't see any relevance with that. Electric lines, uh, connecting to the system shall be placed underground within the interior of each panel. Now, that's physically impossible.
Okay, is there, is there further discussion of the motion to give, uh, ordinance six thirty one a first reading?
Do we, can we?
Frank makes a good point. I think.
I think it should have black commercial.
So we need to.
Yeah.
It's a big problem with that at all. So that, so one would be to amend the ordinance where it says residential to say residential and commercial solar installations. And then the second point, uh,
Eliminate F. I I it's it's a.
So does all of F need to be eliminated, Frank, or just the first sentence?
It it makes no sense. And you read the whole thing, it just makes no sense.
With, it's not each panel, it's the interior of each parcel. So it's, it's any lines from the solar panels collectively, uh, would be underground.
It's the collection system may be placed overhead near substations or points of interconnection with the electric grid. I mean, that's, these are, uh, by their nature within the residence. They're not, we're not, these aren't commercial things that are tied into the grid.
It's not like.
It goes through your.
It's not like what you see on on sixty four going out to show.
You have a switch within within your house or hanging on a side.
French, French right, that can be eliminated.
Yeah, well, let me, let's just talk about it for just a moment. So what this is talking about is bearing any lines that are on the ground, underground, not running them overhead. So I'm not sure we we want to do that. If you do want to, that's that's fine.
Just say they're placed underground and not within the interior of each parcel.
Not not above ground within the parcel. So the parcel, it's, remember, it's parcel, not the panel.
That's what you're right.
When you're connecting to the system.
Yeah, these aren't, but that's.
I'm fine however you want to do it. It's what's the, what, how do you want to amend it?
I think I just don't, I think.
That's if you're going to put, it's usually electricity back into the grid, I think.
Right.
If you have a commercial plans, but you do, you do put it back into the grid. But you do it within the confines of your own electrical.
So that provision is mainly for a conventional lot full of solar panels.
Yeah, we don't.
Going to a substation somewhere.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, so is the mo, the motion, or not the motion, that the suggestion is to remove F?
Yes.
Okay.
And where were, where were, what was your suggestion, Frank, that we put in commercial?
Uh, I think I made, I made, I didn't try to, I didn't try to.
Oh, okay. Residential and commercial.
So Frank, I'll, I'll take your comments to be a motion to amend, uh, six thirty one with effect to adding commercial and with effect to eliminating subpart F.
Yeah, and section two is that it's useless because the okay, once you sign it, once you sign it, it's law or words. And we don't.
The clerk's disagreeing with you, so, um, I'm going to respectfully suggest that the surplus that we leave it in, it it won't hurt us, but if you're, if you want to make a motion to remove that language, that's your prerogative.
Well, I do. I I like less words.
Two and its entirety.
No.
Okay, so the, so your motion is, it's got three parts. Can I suggest that we break it down into if first we deal with the residential and commercial and eliminate F? So that's a first motion. Frank, is that?
That's fine. That's fine.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second, second.
Is there discussion on that motion? Okay, I'll, uh, I'm going to ask for a roll call. Mr. Fulcher?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
It's.
Yes.
Okay, so that amendment is approved now. Frank, I think, not to put words in your mouth, but I think your second motion is to eliminate section two.
Yeah.
From from your second two is at the bottom of page two.
That would, that deals with eliminating the commercial aspect because we just added to note down here. Oh, that section. Okay, sorry, the black, the black, bold black section.
So there's a motion to eliminate section two from the from the ordinance that's been presented. Is there a second to Frank's motion? If then the motion fails for the lack of a second, so now we're back to still giving give a first reading to the, uh, ordinance six thirty one amended. Uh, the motion to add commercial and to eliminate subpart F. Is there discussion on the, the motion to give a first reading to ordinance six thirty one?
As amended.
As amended, yes.
Yeah, we're voting?
I I think we're running some running for both.
Frank?
Yes.
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Sarah? Yes.
Okay, so this has received a first reading and, uh, David, somebody needs to read it.
Right.
Sarah, would you give it a first reading?
Sure. Uh, first reading of City of Prospect ordinance number six thirty one, series two thousand twenty three, the ordinance relating to the regulation of solar installations and creating a new chapter one sixty two of the city of Prospect Code of Ordinance for that purpose.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is, uh, ordinance relating to, no.
The journey.
You just want to keep it going. You, you really want us to be. Like, I'm going to make this up.
So if there's no further business, I'll enter the motion.
Second.
Uh, all in favor of a journey?
Yeah.
Post, we are. Thanks, everyone.
He's got to go check the expiration date on the narco.
Really mean. Whatever.
Yeah, I know. I was going to say, I was going to Google it.
You'll find that. You'll find it. And then I've got you.